Call on you if you can come to the podium. And for those who are in the audience, we had a work session to look at our financial report at 6:30. It is now the appointed hour of 7 o'clock, so I'd like to call our regular scheduled meeting for the Thursday, February 3 meeting of the Lexington City Council to order. And if you will all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all very much. As a point of personal privilege, earlier this week, tragedy on the campus of Bridgewater College. We live in a safe community, but we're, I guess, to a certain degree, never entirely safe. And our hearts go out to the two individuals that passed away and the families and the Bridgewater family, being a college town. So I would ask for everyone here to join me in a moment of silence for the officers Thank you all very much. Next item is consideration of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes. And if there are no additions, we will adopt the agenda as presented. And thank you, Janie. I have a couple of folks that will speak. We will look forward to hearing from them under the Citizens' Remarks, item eight. I will encourage council members, the acoustics are not great, as we've been reminded frequently, so please use your microphones and please speak into them. And I would invite you to pull your mask down to speak so people can hear you clearly. And members of the public, when you have the opportunity to address council, and invite you in the same fashion, because we definitely want to hear what you have to say. Next item on the agenda, our presentations. I would invite Caroline Alexander to come and present the Architectural Review Board annual report. Caroline, welcome.
Yes.
Nice to meet you in person. If you could press the button there, you're live and ready to go.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Thanks for allowing us to come and present based on the year as Chair of the Architectural Review Board for the City of Lexington. Reflecting back on 2021, we held over 19 regular meetings. The first nine meetings were virtual, due to COVID, obviously, and the final 10 were in person. We're very happy to be back in person. The Board approved 32 certificates of appropriateness for those applications, and they are listed in a separate attachment that I think you all have been provided. In 2021, the Board also recommended an addition to the historic district design guidelines to outline appropriate treatment of small cell wireless and other technological facilities within the district, the downtown historic district. This is something that's emerging, and we wanted to get ahead of it relative to what some of our other small cities are starting to see in their historic districts. So we're happy to have that ready to go with the next application that might come forward. The Board is very proud of our design guidelines and encourage the public to view this important document on the lexingtonvirginia.gov website. So it is quite comprehensive, and we'd be happy to receive any questions or comments on that during any one of our meetings. The Architectural Review Board is very appreciative of the considerable effort made by all businesses to meet the historic district design guidelines during the application process. It is these efforts that help preserve the historic fabric of our community while also improving the economic success of downtown Lexington. The Board would like to thank City Council and the citizens of Lexington for allocating time and resources to the ARB. The community is always welcome to attend our meetings, and everyone's participation enables us to represent the collective vision of the city's residents more accurately for our historic district. And thanks again to the city's planning staff for their professional assistance to our Board for every meeting, of course, and especially with the allowing us to use electronic means to be able to continue to meet, which has just been, obviously, so critical. So thank you very much for allowing us to continue to serve the residents and business owners. Any questions that we may have?
Members of council, have any questions?
I'll ask one. Well, sure. First of all, thank you for everything that you and the Board have done for the city.
Yeah.
You're the only Board that has the alternates, the A and B alternates.
Oh, right.
And how has that been working out?
I think it's worked out extremely well. We're very fortunate, we have a dedicated group, all of us, but everybody's schedule does vary. So to be able to have those alternates available, they often will come even if not technically required for a quorum. And also, that helps them listen in and understand if something's going to come back the following meeting, or just what's going on, so that they continue to be abreast of the situation. So we often have a full house. So it's worked out really well.
That's great. Thank you. I'll chime in with the work that you started at the beginning of looking at technology, when we look at antennas.
Yes.
In particular. I hope that we'll continue an age-old tradition, not necessarily a written policy, of trying to utilize chimneys or cupolas or
Absolutely.
Things of that nature that blend in much more so.
Yes, we are challenged with many of the structures in the downtown. We also have hills and valleys. But yes, in the design guidelines that we try to refer back to, it does request that all these items try to be as hidden as possible. Technology changes often, so often that meeting to meeting, we can see different samples and different examples
Right.
Of what may actually be installed. And then if there is, let's say, a six-to-eight month lag time before that piece may be installed, or the painting gets accomplished or something, then we have to kind of go back and look at our notes and say, was, did we approve that? Is that, was that put in exactly as done? And Ernie and staff have been really helpful to allow us to be able to go back and look at things to verify. So yes, it's an evolving process, for sure.
Those pieces in the historic downtown are just so critical
Sure.
And make such a big impact. But no, I speak for all of council in saying thank you for your thoughtful work. And speaking for the businesses, I know, talking to different business owners, they're not excited to go and have their signs approved. But at the same time, the process that you all have embraced and the thoughtfulness and the consistency throughout the community is a great product. So thank you on behalf of all of us.
Oh, our pleasure. And do know that we work to consensus. Our objective is never to deny someone. We try to work with them to be able to come to a consensus decision that we all agree to and that they're happy with as well. So I think we've been very successful in that respect. So thank you.
Thank you. And your children should be very proud of you.
We'll see.
Thank you for bringing your mother out this evening.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Caroline. Next item on the agenda is I'll call on Ernie to present the Board of Zoning Appeals annual report. Welcome, Ernie.
Good evening to you all. State code does require the BZA to provide annual report, but our report is that we have no report. There were no meetings last year for the Board of Zoning Appeals. They did not have applications for either variances or appeals and determinations that I make as a zoning administrator. So our report is really no report.
Glad to report that you have no report. Fantastic. Thank you. Hope we can have another successful year ahead of us.
I will ask a question. Getting to that, when is your next meeting? Do you have a meeting scheduled?
Do have one, March 21. I thought there would be two appeals on that, but it turns out we only have one appeal. So we will be having a BZA meeting on the 21st of March at 6:00 PM at Comedian Meeting Room.
Thank you, Ernie. Next item on the agenda, public hearings. And I'll call on Ernie, before he strays too far, yep, to introduce the requests from the Abigail Inn.
Evening again. We do have a request for the Abigail Inn at 408 South Main Street. They currently have a conditional use permit that allows them up to six bedrooms to be rented out, and they are asking for a seventh bedroom. And they are in the R1 zoning district. And when we, if we look back to October 15 of 2020, that was when the approval was really renewed for that piece of property. And to go along with that renewal, you see the six conditions there on the bottom page, one of your staff report. Those are the conditions currently with that conditional use permit. Back in July of this year, you approved a number of zoning text amendments. One of those increased the number of bedrooms up to eight. That doesn't mean that an operator of a bed and breakfast automatically gets to do eight. You still have to abide by all of these design standards, and there are quite a number of those that we'll get to in a second. On the second page, you have a location map. At the bottom of that page, you have a picture of the front of the Abigail Inn. Going over to the next page, we see a picture from Houston Street that shows the back parking lot. And maybe a little bit more pointed, the second picture there on the bottom of page three, shows the parking lot and the property boundary with the adjacent property at 6 Houston Street. And that's important, and we'll get to that in just a minute. On the next page, we do have a number of those use and design standards that I mentioned. And actually, I should not skip the definition. Excuse me. The definition says dwelling occupied by the owner that provides up to eight bedroom accommodations. As I was putting the staff report together, I realized that the second sentence really needs to be amended, since we went from six to eight, and some of the language is no longer accurate in the second sentence. We will take care of that in our next round of zoning text amendments. Of all the use and design standards, I'd like to, unless you have questions on them, I'm not going to go over them individually, but item J or letter J at the bottom in particular says off-street parking shall be screened from surrounding family residences by landscaping or fencing which is compatible with the neighborhood. As Mr. LaMercier, the applicant and owner of the Inn, we went through the pre-application meeting that's required, we went through all these design standards, and we had a quick discussion about the parking lot area, specifically about the landscaping between the parking lot and the adjacent property. And you'll see that there is a letter dated November 22 at the very end of your packet, where Mr. LaMercier had a conversation and is committed with the owners of the property at 6 Houston Street, where he's committing to put additional landscaping in to specifically buffer that residence. So that he, we do have a commitment, and it's even agreed to by the adjacent property owners. On the bottom of page five, you see your typical or your regular grounds for issuing so a conditional use permit. Those are the A, B, C, and D that you always have to consider, or the criteria to consider a conditional use permit. And Planning Commission did hold a meeting, a public hearing, on December 9. They unanimously make a recommendation for approval with the conditions that staff recommended. And the final set of conditions that are part of staff's recommendations and also part of Planning Commission's recommendations are on page seven. And the only change there is to delete the number six and to go up to seven rooms that could be rented out. You have the Planning Commission minutes there on the bottom of page seven, and going on over to page eight. And that's all I have for presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Members of council, have any questions? Just as a reminder, bed and breakfasts are only allowed on certain streets, Main, Washington, and Nelson.
Right.
And with this criteria. Not Jackson.
No.
Yeah. I was going to say, for anybody listening at home to understand, please hit your mic. Ernie, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite anyone who would like to speak to this issue to please come and do so. The applicants here for questions. Good afternoon. Want to speak to the issue of the bed and breakfast?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Very good. We'll call on you shortly, Anne. Not identifying anybody that wants to speak to this item, close the public hearing at 7:14, and ask for council's consideration.
I move to approve conditional use permit CUP 2021-01 with the six staff recommended conditions.
Second. Have a motion in a second, and discussion. Hearing none, would ask for roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Strongen?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Terry, carry on the good work of your business.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I love paying the lodging tax. I'm very happy there's a surplus, and one room will contribute more.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll point out, proud of Planning Commission and Planning Staff, of course, for the modifications we made for bed and breakfast. This is a home that can handle more, has parking. Not every house is structured this way. So glad to accommodate and have good opportunities for folks to come and enjoy our beautiful community. Next item on the agenda is the minutes from our January 20 City Council meeting and work session. And those were included in your packet. Unless there's anything extra, we will adopt those as presented unless there's an objection. They will stand approved as presented. The next item is citizens' remarks and comments. And we're always excited to have members of the public come and join us for our meetings and share with us things that are on their minds and how we might operate better. Do ask that folks, when they come, that they follow the following guidelines. Ask that you stand at the podium and state your name and address for the clerk to record for the record. We ask you to make your comments to the council as a whole. We ask you to be brief and to state your position and provide facts. Also ask that you provide written statements and/or supporting materials to the clerk for distribution to council and the city manager. Debate is prohibited. But we ask you to speak clearly, as we want to hear what you have to say. And under normal circumstances, we tend to limit the comments to three minutes. Not seeing a lot of folks that want to address council this evening, we may give a little latitude on that. But first signed up is Anne Rusick. Anne, if you'd like to come, address council. And on deck is Rachel Rowland, I believe it is?
I'm sorry. I thought that was just a sign. So I don't know.
Just happy to be here and visit. Fantastic. Thanks for being here. Anne, if you could, please, press the button that'll light up the microphone, so we can hear you. And of course, these are recorded as public meetings.
Okay. Oh, my name is Anne Rusick. I live at 642 Paget Hill Road, Natural Bridge. I do, however, have a daughter and grandchildren that live in the Lexington city limits. I'm here today because I have some questions and concerns about the proposed Lexington Mounted Police. According to the City of Lexington website, the Lexington Bike Patrol has four specially-trained officers who can be seen on duty for special events, such as the Fourth of July fireworks, Halloween, and the Christmas parade. Will the two mounted police persons only be used for these same three events? Or they will be, will they be mounted daily, weekly? If they are used only for special events, is their real purpose primarily for public relations, as opposed to safety or criminal activity deterrent? And why isn't the bike patrol used more often than those three events? Because it was my understanding, when the bike patrol came into existence, it was for the same purposes as a mounted patrol, visibility within the community. Ms. Logan cited in the paper, I'm using all my information from the last week's article in the News Gazette. Ms. Logan cited in that article, visibility of officers was a primary reason for the mounted police, a community event. I'm wondering, is there any statistical data or evidence that there has been criminal activity or problems at Lexington city events because of a lack of police visibility? The Lexington Carriage Company was referenced as an example of an already existing equine activity within city limits. Question, the carriage horses only work seasonally. Will the mounted units also be seasonal? How many hours per day would a mounted horse be used? Has any consideration been given to the fact that Lexington streets are steep, not flat, like the streets in Virginia Beach and Portsmouth? Footing could potentially create an environment conducive for slipping and falling. Lexington streets are narrow. Many motorists are not aware of how to safely pass a person on horseback. The chief of police suggested the mounted patrol could be viewed as a recruitment tactic for the hiring of additional policemen. My question is, if the mounted unit was used with the same limited frequency as the bike patrol, why would there, why would three or four occasions a year increase applications? If visibility is your primary objective, have you considered a motorcycle unit? Is Lexington truly a horse community? There is no evidence of a significant economic viability of equestrian enterprises in this county in the past 25 years. The existing boarding businesses compete for the limited number of equestrians needing their services, and the lack of interest in equine activities among children and young adults in Rockbridge County is a primary reason why equine facilities in this county struggle. Equine 4-H number membership is down. There is no Rockbridge County IEA program. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but that's an interscholastic program which exists in every other county throughout this state. My granddaughter, as I mentioned, referenced, is a Lexington County resident, and she has to go to Stanton to participate in that program. And there is no Pony Club in Rockbridge County. I realize these are organizations you may not be familiar with, but I assure you, within the equestrian community, it's almost unheard of that a community that professes to have a strong equine community would not have those three activities currently going on. Dover, the only tax store in Rockbridge or Augusta County, closed due to lack of business. Back to the horses, who will care for the two horses? Pay, who will pay the two, who will pay the person? Who will be responsible for assuring the horses are cared for daily? How will the horses get from the Virginia Horse Center to Lexington to perform their duties? Will they be transported by trailer, as the carriage horses are? Will they actually, will they be ridden from the Virginia Horse Center, down 39 and 11 into the city? Have the horses been professionally trained, the ones that have been donated? Are they desensitized to handle crowds, traffic, fireworks? I understand from the paper that they are looking into liability issues. I can assure you, as a horse owner and a participant in the horse industry for over 50 years, there will be liability issues, and new ones come up all the time. Including the liability for the person taking care of those horses. Unfortunately, we are not Middleburg, Virginia, nor are we Aiken, South Carolina, or even Lexington, Kentucky. All of those cities invest revenues in promoting their equine industry, assets, and participants. Lexington and Rockbridge County do not. Of course, absolutely, you give lodging taxes to the Virginia Horse Center. But there's no program within the county or the city to actually promote the equine community here. I also would like to know, what is a criteria for a very experienced rider as it pertains to the mounted officers? And I pretty much figured that I'd be out of three minutes by then, so I don't have any more to offer, other than that my own personal experience is, you can Google me, I have been, not just around horses, I have actively worked, I have pursued a career in horses since I was 16 years old. I worked on the racetrack for over 30 years. I moved here. My daughter has an active boarding business in Rockbridge County. And I'm very, I am all about horses, but I'm very concerned that this project or idea could, although it sounds great, I think there's a lot more that you have to investigate and a lot more questions. And I would hate to see it fail or blow up in your faces just because of questions that you wouldn't even know to ask, because you're not equestrians. Thank you.
Anne, thank you for being with us and sharing those questions. The city manager and/or our police chief will follow up with you with answers to many of those, or extend the conversation, and perhaps even solicit additional ideas and help for implementing this, so that we can implement it right. But thank you for your
You're welcome.
Commitment to the horsing community and to our community.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, or rather, are there other citizens that would like to address council this evening? Mr. Reed?
Sorry. I didn't see you.
It's okay. We don't require you to sign up, but we always like to keep it orderly, if at all possible.
Still on, right?
Yes, sir.
I don't need to talk long. I just want to, the last, the last time we were here, council heard a public comment about sidewalks and the need for people to shovel their sidewalks. And somebody listened, and the city acted, and I think that's a good thing. Though in my opinion, I think it was, it was too late, about a week or two, too late. Good Samaritans helping people out is always a good thing, and we should applaud those people. But that shouldn't be the key takeaway with the problem that came up at the last public comments. The key takeaway is that we had a big snowstorm, and for a long time, in my opinion, too long, the city streets and sidewalks were unsafe. While the city streets weren't unsafe for walkers, except when you had to walk in them, because the city sidewalks, many of them, were completely unsafe. Now, one of the reasons I moved here, and one of the reasons that I stayed here, is because Lexington, as we all know, is a walkable city. It's scenic at daytime or nighttime. It's healthy. It's good. I walk the city streets all over the city, every single day. My wife does. We both walk our dogs, separate times, all around the city, all around these sidewalks. Maybe you've probably seen me, or my wife, or our dog. And we love to do that. But it's unsafe. And it's always good to have, like I said, good Samaritans. But the key takeaway is, we failed, well, many of the citizens failed, but the city failed because they didn't enforce their ordinance. And, you know, I've had a lot to say about this to a lot of people, including you now, and the response has been, well, you know, you're from Michigan, and this is true. I am. I think it's snowing right now in Michigan, and I think there's a lot more snow there right now than we saw this winter or last winter, and even the winter before. But I am from Michigan, so I know about shoveling sidewalks and driveways, and so forth and so on. It's a hard job, and somebody's got to do it. Somebody has to do it. That's all there is to it. If you're a homeowner, you're responsible for shoveling your walk. The city's responsible for taking care of their streets. Businesses are responsible for their walks, so forth and so on. There is no excuse. You have to do it, or you have to find somebody to do it for you, or you have to pay somebody to do for you. Period. End of story. You have to go out there, you have to shovel. It's the right thing to do, it's the responsible thing to do. And if we ignore it, then we're ignoring an ordinance that's there for the reason, for a good reason. And if you're not going to enforce it, then like, you know, we said before, stop it. Get rid of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. And glad that Mother Nature is helping to clear all the streets, and hopefully won't have any flooding from the current circumstances. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Hearing none, I'll close the citizens' remarks and comments and go to our consent agenda. Items are there before you, and would ask for council's consideration. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, and a roll call vote, please. Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Strongen?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And looks like good, good walking for, for folks with the street closures. Next item, not aware of any unfinished business, we'll go directly into reports and communications, and I'll call on Mr. Smith for the Blue Ridge Resource.
Can I ask one? Sorry. Can I ask one question on unfinished business? What is our, moving forward with the Spotswood Proposals? Do we have any kind of tentative schedule, or are you getting to that later?
Getting to that later.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Smith, Blue Ridge Resource Authority.
The authority has not met since our last meeting, but I wanted to up you date, up your date, update you on cell two construction. Construction is complete. Excavation should be finishing sometime next week, and the rain tarp installation crew should begin, or should begin Monday after they get there. That's all I got. Questions?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Strongen, Main Street, Lexington.
The Love Letters will be set up in Hopkins Green on February, Friday, February 11, with a ribbon cutting on Saturday, February 12, at 1:00 PM. And the letters will remain in town until Tuesday, February 22. We invite everyone to take selfies with the Love Letters, share your photos. We invite everyone to take selfies with the Love Letters, share your photos, and tell us what you love best about Lexington by using hashtag Love Lex, sorry, Love VA and hashtag Lex Love Letters in your posts. To go inside with the letters in town, Restaurant Week will be moved up a week and run Wednesday, February 16th through Tuesday, February 22nd. And the Valentine's Gift Guide is available online at mainstreetlexington.org, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Strawn? Very good. Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission met on Thursday, January 27th. The Planning Commission reviewed two conditional use permit applications. The first was from Paul Cosmos for a conditional use permit to allow the first floor of an existing building in the C1 Commercial District located at 17 North Randolph Street to be used as residential dwelling units. The Planning Commission voted to recommend denial of the request with a vote of three to four. The second application by Margaret Hutton for a conditional use permit to allow a bed and breakfast in at 601 South Main Street was unanimously recommended for approval, and both these items will come before council at our next meeting. At Planning Commission's next meeting on Thursday, February 10th, we will review the bike and pedestrian plan at its 60% completion phase. The meeting will be by Zoom to accommodate the consultants and, as always, is open to the public, so please contact the planning department if you'd like to participate. On Thursday, February 24th, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the Washington and Lee Master Plan right here in the Littleburn Downing Middle School Cafeteria, and that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
I think just part of the process on the 24th will be explaining the process of a master plan approval and, and request. It's, it's a little bit different, and the responsibility of the, the city in working through that, so, so it will be part and parcel on the 24th.
Yes, I believe that would be part of the intro. And Planning Commission, we did have a meeting a couple months ago just to talk about what a master plan is and what an institutional overlay is, because that's what we're dealing with, with this master plan. So we've done some background, there'll be an introduction, we will have the public, a presentation, public hearing. It is very likely, because of the complexity of the issue, that it will extend over a couple of meetings.
Very good. I just think it's important for people in the community to understand, we certainly have, I'm sure all have counsel, but I know I've received comments of, you know, Washington and Lee just having carte blanche to do whatever they want, and that's not, in fact, there's a process for the approval. We may or may not support the request that they make and, as we work through it, so that people know where, where we are in the process and how to follow it and provide input along the way. So, thank you. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Ayers.
Thank you. Tourism's next meeting is Wednesday, February 16th, but I do have a few items to share tonight. First off, Regional Tourism was one of 10 destination marketing organizations accepted into the latest round of Virginia Tourism's DRIVE 2.0 program. You might remember Drive 1.0 from maybe four years ago. Do you remember this? It was before I got there. But DRIVE 2.0 is part of the second phase of the statewide tourism strategic plan and components to the program. If we participate is a community survey, stakeholder consensus meetings, and by going through those hoops, an opportunity to just secure $10,000 to help implement program outcomes, so it's, it's worth going for. Also wanted to mention the BMX event last weekend. That was a big success. There were about 1,100 bikers participating and about 3,400 participants and spectators each day last weekend, which was about on par with last year's event. We have one year remaining on this three-year contract. We're hoping to get it renewed for subsequent years, but it, it seems like it was a success. The biggest problem this year was getting the, the equipment, the, the haulers to move the dirt because of the, the snow. They had to come from North Carolina, and there was some fear that they wouldn't get there in time, but everything worked out, so. Leslie, you mentioned the, the Love Letters in Hopkins Green next week. I was kind of surprised. I found out that Virginia Tourism charges localities a $500 fee for transport and installation of those Love Letters, and Tourism picked that up. Finally, just wanted to mention that House Bill 38, sponsored by delegate Ronnie Campbell, and Senate Bill 292, sponsored by Creedede's, have passed the Virginia House of Delegates and Senate respectively, and now we're just waiting on the governor's signature to amend the scenic river designation for Maury River to uncover the entire Maury River, all 42 miles of it, so looking forward to that, and it's very good news.
Great news. Any questions for Dennis in Regional Tourism?
No, not a question, just want to add something that came up in the Friends of Natural Bridge meeting we had on Tuesday. There's a Senate bill sponsored by Emmett Hager, Hanger, in the works to get funding to cover the debt of, of Natural Bridge, so if you want to lean on our, our local legislators to, to, to give, give support of that, by all means, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. With that report, Dennis, I would say Virginia remains for lovers, but love is not free if we're paying $500 for the Love Letters. Thank you for your report. Rockbridge Area Recreation Organization, Mr. Ziegler.
I actually appreciate you mentioning that $500. It's not a huge amount, but that project may not happen without tourism taking care of it, so appreciate that, because it benefits Lexington and the whole region. But the Raro Board of Directors met last night. There's, we're concluding basketball right now. It's been a great season. As you know, we, we make the most of our gyms, and then soon we'll be going right into softball and baseball registration, and of course, that's online. People can drop information off to our office, but we will also have tables for registration at the final few Saturdays of basketball games and so on, so that families can, can sign up there for softball and baseball. Then our meeting last night, we kind of turned it into kind of a budget work session, because one of the, you know, goals of, of the city finance department that is the fiscal agent for Raro is to, you know, try to force organizations to get their budget going, and so we have a new executive director, and he wasn't sure if we wanted to go through it line by line and question everything, and we assured him that we didn't need to, but we reserve the right to ask any question at any time. But what we talked about was, you know, the budget is semi-in line with previous years. He's moving some things around to account for the fact that we would like to go away from those famous reversible jerseys that are, that are, you know, I don't know, maybe had their day, and to try to get to the point where kids can have a jersey based on their team, a team color that they can wear to school and so on, and so there's a little give and take on the budget with that, but we would like to try to get some sponsors to help underwrite that cost. I mean, small things like that, however, the big part of our budget increase will be personnel, and we feel that that will be seen by every organization within the city and the two, both cities and the county, and so that, as, as our budget comes forward and gets put, put out for review, that won't be a surprise to anyone. So I believe, oh, one last thing. Chad Coffey, our executive director, has noticed that we have a need for indoor space in the wintertime. This is no surprise to anyone. I've mentioned this before. Our wrestling program is getting squeezed due to lack of facility, also having a lack of facility that we can use. It, it may keep us from having a, a small winter cheer program. It may keep us from being able to maybe absorb and work with the pickleball organization. So our goal is to try to find an indoor space. Honestly, it doesn't have to be free, but we would love for it to be free, but something so that we can maintain some of our programs in the winter. A gym might be a pie, you know, like, just not possible. We're not looking for a place to necessarily play basketball, because again, that takes a lot of cool facilities that may be in existence in the area off the table, but if there are people, if there are individuals or businesses that may have access to a warehouse that would lend itself to what I'm describing, where wrestling mats could be stored, we could roll them out, and kids could resume that great activity and other activities that, that could be done indoors, we would love for folks to even put up their hand if we don't know you already, because Chad Coffey, our executive director, would love to talk to you, because we just think that that's the next step for us to try to provide more and more activities beyond the ones we're already offering. So if you know of anyone or of any facilities, please send them our way. Thank you.
I'm not sure of the ownership structure at this point, but the former Natural Bridge High School had a large gym. It's not geographically desirable for mo, historically, for Raro activities, but that could be a good entity to partner with, and it's just a brisk 15, 20 minutes.
It's, it's not far at all. The pickleball club uses that facility already. It's, it's, it's an idea, and, and that's what we, we would love to hear more of those ideas. You know, we've got board members that talk about the Effinger Gym all the time, because we've got a board member that represents that, that district essentially. I mean, we, we look forward to these ideas and trying to find something that works for adults and kids in our community.
Terrific. Thank you, David. Any questions for Mr. Ziegler? Hearing none. Ann, before you take off, would you see our clerk and share your email and phone number so we can follow up with you? I'm not sure, I know we've got your address, but love to be able to reach you, and thank you again for being with us this evening. Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. Threshold met last Wednesday, and we had an opportunity to review the takeaways from the November 17th education session with the Planning Commission. We reviewed the December 9th Planning District Commission Roundtable that some of us participated in on Zoom. The review led to a discussion of the threshold mission, which includes providing public information on housing issues and serving the housing needs of Lexington, most specifically those of the elderly, handicapped, and low-income targeted groups. There was a consensus that to appropriately move forward, move threshold forward, that we needed to accomplish some things. But first of all, we need to do more recruitment of members who have a passion for our local housing mission. Next, we need to contact the established housing group out of Charlottesville that was mentioned at the education session, so that we can glean some of their expertise and what they're doing in Charlottesville in regard to their housing group. And we want to contact VHDA to obtain current trends in affordable, in the affordable housing industry that we could possibly use here to assist this community. And next, we want to get back in step with our local housing partners in order to continue the minor home repair projects that we were doing until the pandemic cut those projects short. All of these things are in keeping with the original mission that was set forth originally, August of 1989, when the bylaws were set. If we don't do those things, then threshold is going to go by the wayside, and there were some passionate people that established threshold, and I would hate to see that happen, so we're fighting to make sure it continues. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Alexander? There certainly are, continue to be needs of helping folks repair their homes and things of that nature, which threshold, I think, was part of the original premise for getting started. Thank you for bringing that forward. Maury Service Authority, Mr. Alligood.
We did have a meeting this past Tuesday, and the, just so everybody will know in advance, we're going to have another meeting in February, and write this down, it's going to be on 2/22/22. Significantly, though, the, not, not to make too much light of it, whatnot, but we did some serious business this past Tuesday. One of the new items that was presented to us by the engineers that have performed the original study for documenting what repairs need to occur to modernize the water plant, we were, the board was given information by them and the executive director that Virginia has a program, are you all familiar with FCAP? Another set of letters. It's through VDH, another set of letters. Anyway, to explain, Virginia Department of Health has a sub-program that finances repairs and modernizations to water plants throughout the state, and if you happen to have a plan or an engineering survey, which MSA now has, that qualifies MSA to submit an application that the board approved that the engineers submit by the deadline of April the 1st, and as it happens, the loan amount, max loan amount that was mentioned in the meeting is $20 million loan. I looked up the FCAP rates and whatnot, and it published, it says in the vicinity of 3%, but here's the kicker. It's possible, and it depends on where you are in the queue for these applications, to get forgiven up to 45% of the amount. And so there's no commitment on MSA's part right now, other than to make application and start the process and see how that goes, and then we'll, we'll see what kind of feedback we get back from FCAP and VDH to decide then. We haven't decided what has to happen first in there, but it certainly makes the financing more interesting when you hear numbers and stories like that, and we weren't aware until the Tuesday meeting about this financing possibility and about the potential forgiveness amount. Now, all that's floating, because it might not be 45%, it might be, you, you can, you can structure a lot of financial deals, a lot of different ways in there, but it puts us in play to make this application. So again, the board, MSA board, approved going forward with submitting this application ASAP. End of report.
Thank you, sir. Yes, the state can come up with some creative ideas for programming, and they can change very quickly as, with their structure. Any questions for Ms. Alligood? Chuck.
Oh, sorry. He said Chuck.
No, go ahead.
I'm glad that the board's looking into that, trying to find some alternative funding for that project. Did, I know you like research. Did, did you happen to research how much, what the budget is for the Department of Health with that FCAP program?
The answer is, it's kind of a loose number right now. I think that there is additional money that has become available, and there, there was no, there was no cap mentioned that is, they have, but again, the VDH people, the FCAP people, they're going to decide what they want to spend, and no number limitation was mentioned yet. I expect there'll be one, though.
I'm curious about the forgiveness conditions. Was, was that discussed?
It was, but only to the extent that it's a possibility and that you're not in line for anything unless you submit an application and start the process, and then start the conversation about what our needs are, what the amount, and our, our current amount that's been projected for the water plant is 20 million. That's the number that the engineers have put together for this, so it kind of fits the limitation, the 20 million limitation. Not that we would get it all, no telling what the arrangement is going to be finally, whatnot, but we want to start the process and find out where we stand and get some answers for that.
Just clarification, are we that close, is the MSA that close to spending $20 million?
No.
Okay. I mean, you know, the timeline, April 4th or April 1st is, you know, a deadline, and I'm sure Jordan is busy as it is with his own budget and work and a new application for something, but I just wasn't, didn't realize, what if they come back and say, "Great application"? I just, I didn't know if we were coordinated, ready to, if we know exactly what we need yet. So that's.
The board also authorized the beginnings of the preliminary engineering reports for, that would accompany the projected plan for modernizing, and those would have to be done. And that's going to be a length of time as well. And so in no way are they ready to do it by April the 1st. But the deadline for this year is April the 1st, and we want to be, we want to meet that, just to see where we stand.
This is an annual opportunity?
Apparently, I've learned, the FCAP money is issued on a continuing basis. It's not a, it's not a one-shot, over and done with in a year deal. Apparently, it's continuing, and it just so happens that the amount of money that MSA is going to need merges pretty well with what money is potentially available at first glance. And FCAP, just to tell you what FCAP means, it means the Financial and Construction Assistance Programs. It's through the Virginia Department of Health. So you can go online and do, and you can just Google FCAP through VDH. I did that, and it showed up.
And who brought this, who shared this with us?
The engineers.
That we were not, we did not know this?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, since they also award $35,000 cash, those applications can be done all year round for planning and design. I mean, so this sounds great. I hope that we get something. I mean, that's great, and I hope there's others that we don't know about yet. But that, it does concern me that we're just finding out about certain things.
And thank goodness we did find out about it, because we have a need that is getting greater by the day for modernizing that water treatment plant.
Charles, did they mention what the turnaround time is and when you would know about an award?
No. We're at their mercy once we submit the application.
And my experience with programs such as this is, a great deal of it is supply and demand. Nobody asks for it because nobody has any plant construction going on. The money rolls over and doesn't get utilized. If you have big demand, it gets thinned out, and the 45% becomes 20 or something of that nature. So it is a fluid process.
And one of the pluses for us, for MSA, happens to be a matter of luck to have had this engineering report that we've been pushing for, for over two years, over two years, finally come into being, and to have it happen about the same time is fortuitous.
Might even say providential.
Might even say that, right.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Alligood? Excellent. From my report, have a couple of items. As you all may recall, today was Legislative Day for VML in Richmond, given that we had council. Obviously, no one attended today. Yesterday, Virginia First Cities held a virtual legislative day. Jim and I were able to zoom in. Do all of you all, did you get the invitation for that event? Okay. We'll work on that, because I, it anticipated that it went to everyone. Generally, or as usual, one of the more interesting and entertaining pieces was Jim Regenball's report and his slides, glad to get out to everyone. But he was acknowledging that there's $12 billion in excess revenue going to the general fund over the next two bienniums. 2.5 billion for higher ed capital improvements. So money is sloshing around Richmond. So it should be an interesting discussion. Of course, the governor prior and the current governor have talked about refunds to citizens. Governor Northam, I think, had suggested $250 for individuals, 500 for couples, and Governor Youngkin has upped the ante to 300 and 600. Remains to be seen what will happen with that. The other that Youngkin has proposed is doubling the standard deduction, much like the Tax Act, I think, of 2020, and making things, larger deduction for taxpayers in the state of Virginia. And of course, the big question is, as the deck chairs get reshuffled, how do you plan to pay for it? And Mr. Youngkin hasn't brought forward with his budget exactly how he's going to pay for things. The conversation, again, with First Cities, and I encourage each of you, if you haven't become active in lobbying our legislators, ours, Senator Deeds and Delegate Campbell, and any others for that matter, there are four primary issues that I would encourage you to contact and lobby on behalf of the city of Lexington and join me in lobbying them. One is the fight every year for $5.99 for police departments. It is political football, but very important that we keep that. It would be devastating financially, a significant impact to us if that doesn't get passed. May have read today, the grocery tax is being revisited because of the impact it has on the composite index and school funding, but we'll see where that, I would, I planned a lobby for that to be left untouched by our legislators. And then also helping to educate our legislators on education funding. The increases that they have indicated for teachers, remind all of you sitting here, and I know our school board knows, that is only for SOQ positions. It is not for all of our staff. So we would be required to pick up and pay for the additional increases for those that aren't included in SOQs. Don't know exactly what that dollar is, but it's always nice when the state raises, provides raises, but not the money for them, from that standpoint. Ms. Alexander.
Did they say anything about whether that would be a match? Because I think that was discussed initially.
I do recall there being some discuss, discussion of that, but it's still somewhat fluid. I don't know definitively. And then the fourth item being the jail per diems. We sent a resolution to our legislators, but again, lobbying them. I think Senator Deeds doesn't have a clear picture of what the jail per diem impact is. We're just asking the state to pay for the, for their inmates, as it is. On another topic, looking at snow removal. Mother Nature has done a great job today reducing, I'm not sure who's responsible for removing the massive mound in front of the Montessori school across the street, but it was nice to be able to come down the street. Special thank you to the police, fire, and neighbors who all pitched in to assist other neighbors. And it's been some time since we've had an issue or an event, weather event like this. But in discussions with the city manager, it's time to update our ordinance regarding snow removal, or specifically the penalties associated with it. So unless there's an objection, I've asked the city manager to work with the city attorney and bring us a new ordinance for our consideration. It's probably when the temperatures start rising, but as soon as practical. Looking at Spotswood, the, we had our work session, and at the time, two things that we talked about, one was if council members had questions, to send them to the city manager. To date, there have been no follow-up questions of staff. But from our conversation, I think there was a majority, not unanimous, favor of density, whether it be, I think condos or apartments, but that that is the direction that council is working. For clarity for all of us, as well as for the community, I've asked the city manager to work with Arnie to prepare a calendar similar to what we do for our budget calendar. It's not locked in, it's not rigid, and there's no hard and fast issues, or their, their due dates, not deadlines. But the ambition is, again, much like our budget calendar, to have a clear path of where we're going in this effort. Of course, we'll include public input, additional work sessions, public hearing, to move this decision forward for the benefit of the city, the citizens, as well as the developer that we will ultimately partner with. So be on the lookout for the schedule. The goal is to solicit public input on the future use of Spotswood, and ensure that all who are interested and participating to know the process and where council is in the process. As this is a competitive process, there will be those who are pleased with our decision and those who are not. We wish to have all parties involved and informed every step of the way. Work sessions for this effort may be changed up in the way we meet in off weeks or, and not prior to council meetings. So if we are having a work session and we feel the need to go an hour and a half, we can do so. We're not constricted by the regular meeting. So be on the lookout. May also, if it's the pleasure of council, you know, 5:15 or 5:30 is a preferable time, give you an opportunity to get to the meeting place from work and plan to knock out those work sessions. But please let the city manager know of your preferences as we work to assemble that Casually, I had agreed with John Driscoll about meeting with the Planning Commission, having joint meetings twice a year in January and in July. And the intention being that things that the Planning Commission felt were important and that they would like to see in the budget, we would be aware and perhaps work towards implementing or having that part of our budget. We did not do that in January, going to work with staff to perhaps have a joint meeting, if it's still the desire of their current chair, Jamie Gooden, but still stand by that plan to have that connectivity and make sure that we're pulling in the same direction with our shared goals financially as well as structurally. And lastly, from my peanut gallery, thank you all for utilizing your technology. It's been a little while, we're starting to get used to it. It wasn't easy and still rely on some paper, but thank you all for embracing. I know it's additional work for staff, and Janie works hard to have it available to us and to the community. So thank you, Janie, for your efforts, and thank you, council, for embracing the computers and working our way towards paperless. And unless there are any questions, to answer your question on Spotswood?
Yes.
Yes. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Got one question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Talking about setting up the schedule for Spotswood, will the first session be kind of a repeat of the last one, where the developers could actually be here?
That'll be forthcoming, but that's certainly part and parcel, is for them to be able to come and present, and have equal time to present their proposals. A question perhaps now and by nod of heads or shaking yes or no. Again, the preference being to look at primarily the higher-density plans of the collaborative and Echelon. Echelon, obviously, provided just the one, but I think that has been council's desire. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but just for clarity. I didn't see any movement of your head, Chuck. Very good. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you covered some of my reports, saw gloss over those things. Quickly, Regional Jail Commission, you may recall that we are working in our community to put an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, out for a consultant to evaluate our current facility, determine whether or not we need to renovate it, expand it, or perhaps build a new jail. We did find in this process that our neighbors to the west, Allegheny and Bath County and the city of Covington, are in a very similar situation. So we invited them to have a conversation, determine whether or not there was any benefit in moving forward together, which we found there is. So the RFQ that we are, we already put out this week, be due in mid-March response, does include an option for their jail to also look and be considered for the same improvements, renovation, perhaps expansion. Or one option would be, based on the consultant's findings, would be that we would consolidate our jails and have one jail for all six localities. So we're going to be looking at individually, what do we do here in our region, what do they do in the Allegheny region, and potentially, what can we do together if that seems to make sense? So those are our objectives. We will be receiving, again, hopefully, some good responses and have a committee put together to review those responses, just as we did with the DSS consulting work. I see a few head nods or maybe questions? We're good to go? Okay. I won't touch more on the cigarette tax, we've already gone through that. Public Works Report, Jeff Martin, along with our finance director, Jennifer Bell, and some of his team are looking at interviewing five firms next week so that they can be, we can set a contract or agreement with them for civil consulting and design work. We typically do this about every five years, select two or three firms, who then on a regular basis, as needed, we can call on to provide those engineering and design skills that we might require for certain projects. I think a couple of you might have noticed or said something about Washington Street, and I would say emphatically, stay away from East Washington Street. The road's going to be a mess, or it is a mess and going to be a mess for at least another two to four weeks. Most of that is a result of city water main installation there. It's going well, according to Jeff, but however, there is some rock, as we have in many cases. And just based on the depths of that line and other circumstances, he indicates there will probably be another two weeks of construction. They have to then test the pipes there to make sure there's no, they pressure test them to make sure the pipes are solid, and then they have to do bacteria and other testing to make sure that they, they're sanitary. And that'll take several weeks. So we could be two weeks to four weeks there before we start seeing the iron plates removed and the holes leveled over with even temporary patch. So stay away. The other thing we're doing near the historic society of property and the tourism there, if you've noticed, there's a boring machine going under Washington Street to replace the Town Branch Interceptor in that area. That was identified some years back as an area we needed to look at. It's on the CIP, we're now moving forward. We don't anticipate there'll be any street closures there, or the street itself won't be torn up or opened up, but there is equipment moving in and out of those sites over a while. So I would say, again, from Randolph Street all the way to Lewis Street, avoid East Washington. Tell your friends and neighbors, and help us all.
Jim, I would mention one thing. Anytime there's even just a little bit of snow, the courthouse closes the upper deck entrance, and the only way to get into the courthouse parking lot is that Washington Street entrance. So I'm hopeful we won't have any snow at all in the next two weeks, but if we do, we may run into an issue.
Thank you, appreciate that. And speaking of staying away from certain areas of the community, on, this get to be repetitious and discouraging, but we're making a lot of progress, it's just that it comes with a cost. On the 7th, 8th, and 9th of this month, North Main will be shut down in the area of the Aquatic Center, because the, the construction at that point in time will require having laminated roofs, beams, ceiling beams coming in and being installed. So two cranes will be set up, and on the 7th, 8th, and 9th, there will be daytime complete shutdown of North Main Street. So you should avoid that area all three of those days. After the cranes are set up and the beams begin to come in, they will be obviously lifted onto the Aquatic Center. And at that point in time, there will be a lane shift, but two lanes should remain open for the duration of having those beams placed. I would still avoid the area, because you know as well as I do, when there's a lane shift or something comes up of that nature, it snarls traffic, and things happen that aren't anticipated. So if, you know, again, friends and neighbors can be advised, I would find another place to leave. to leave town going north.
Jim, can I just speak up on behalf of the residents? And I hate to single out one street or another because they're all challenged, but when Main Street is impacted and traffic is intentionally diverted onto Randolph Street, that's very difficult. And I don't necessarily have a better solution because if you send everyone up Diamond, you have a situation also. That's a very hard street to navigate when there's enhanced traffic. But Randolph is, two cars cannot pass by there with parking on both sides of the streets, and people will lose mirrors, and it just, so, I've said it, I've spoken up on behalf of those residents, but I don't have a great solution, so good luck with that, Jim.
But note it, that's why I say avoid that area. Go out on the bypass.
I don't know if there's any provision to, if there's any way, VMI has areas, I would think, that could be utilized for parking perhaps for the neighborhood, since VMI is closing down. I don't know how many spaces there are underneath the core physical training facility, but neighbors possibly could use that for the days that that's closed to give people an opportunity to pass because it is, with the parking situation of the neighbors currently, that heightened traffic is very, very difficult, especially if there are any delivery trucks and things of that nature. Not to mention the water project inside the streets that are torn up currently. So it's a relative perfect storm for disruption for those folks.
And also, when it snows, Randolph Street is nearly impossible to get two cars passing each other there.
Pray for more rain.
Succinct observations, they're all true. The IDA met last night, and they approved a refunding, that is a refinancing of bonds that were previously issued for Kendall. Again, that was approved with no issues or problems at all. It was a meeting that both Janie and I were happy to participate in. I think it lasted seven minutes. Is that about right, Janie? Exactly. So I wouldn't say that should be a goal for council meetings, but yeah, it was pleasant.
Quick question on that.
Yes, sir.
Will the city be receiving any proceeds as a result of that refinancing?
Yes, we will.
Do you know what the number is?
I do not.
Okay.
Oh, worthwhile, seven minutes then. So thank you to Jim and Janie very much.
The rate of return was pretty good for the time invested, yes.
And, but those are funds specific to IDA, not the city in general.
Correct. There are the IDA funds that, you know, we can go to the IDA and for the purposes they're set up for, we could request or make, again, a request, I guess, for how those funds could be used for other projects, you know, development in the community.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. A little more information on planning activities. As Councilmember Strong mentioned, the planning commission did meet twice in January. The ARB also met twice and proved a certificate of appropriateness. The building official issued four permits in the downtown historic district, so there has been some activity in January. Rates a little slow this time of year, and in fact, it's down from last year a little bit as well, which isn't a problem, it's just an observation. In the fire department, they're working right now with Medicare. They're required to do a study for Medicare to determine what the actual costs are providing services for Medicare-eligible individuals, what it costs to us on an annual basis, it's a year-long study, and what kind of reimbursement we're provided by Medicare. Apparently Medicare is at least considering revising their repayment structure. They are now the lowest, they're the provider that provides the least amount of recovery on the services that we provide. So we, I won't say we lose money, but we don't recover very much from the services we provide for Medicare-eligible individuals. So just something that's occurring that may have a positive impact on us. The police department is looking with our IT manager, Nathan Straub, at partnering with a vendor who has a camera system that would enforce speeding in our school zones. So we're looking at now to see if that technology might be applicable to our two schools and in the community. I can't say whether that will or will not occur, but at least there's technology out there, and apparently it's a pretty viable opportunity for us to at least evaluate. So on the 25th of, yes, sir?
I was going to ask if those fines will be, are those citations, would they be going against your driving record, or are those just civil penalties?
I've not participated, I've just been told that that's occurring. I can ask the chief, but I don't know.
Thank you.
The police department did a community walk at the Fairview Place on the 25th of this past month, and with members of the local VFW. So it's a great opportunity, it has been occurring with the Department of partnering with other local agencies and entities of visiting places of interest and where residents can be helped in our community by those two entities in that case. The speed trailer is deployed on South Jefferson now, near McDonald Street. Obviously, we get concerns or calls about speeding, and we try and get somebody out there, get the trailer out there and monitor that situation. Mentioned the sidewalks, no removal ordinance. I don't know that we need to do any more than, as the mayor said, I do, I've already spoken with our attorney, Jared, and we're going to try and look at our current code and come forth with a recommendation very soon. Hopeful, I'll say it here public, I hope we can get it down before you in March. It won't be in our next meeting. So it'll be fresh in our minds, and we can hopefully put a better tool in place that's better understood for the, about the community, more easily enforceable and reasonable, and get the results we'd hope for. I did want to take as a side note, and it was also mentioned by the mayor and others, time to thank those staff from the fire department and police department who did spend two hours Sunday afternoon shoveling walks. So that's Jeremy Nicely, Brian Emery, Lucas Whitman, Arthur Chidham, Kirsten Engel, Ryan Caprino, Addison Seaton, Gabriella Handford, James Shidler, Chase Calhoun, and Fire Chief Ty Dickerson in the fire department. And in the police department, there was Matthew Lombardi, Jessica Burks, Scott Fishtrell, Mike Frost, and Chief Angela Green. And I was out there for a time with them, and I can tell you, most of them were swinging picks at various times to chip off two to three inches of hard ice. Some of the stuff still came off with shovels, but much of it did not. So it was a good effort, not what we hoped to see in the future, and we'll make plans so that we don't see that in the future, hopefully. I mentioned DSS and the building site consultant. That consultant now is working, Thompson and Litten, with the DSS to further refine their needs and understand what their needs are. It is not a space needs study, it's just verifying what that study said and what the current thinking is in DSS because things have changed in the last couple of years as to how staff is utilized and employed. Do you need as many offices, et cetera, with working from home, et cetera? Also, working and looking at some of the other sister agencies in the health and wellness area who may also benefit from co-locating, just to see if that's an option within particular buildings or structures that could be available, or sites that may be available where a new building would be built. So progress is being made. Local housing study, Buena Vista, Rockbridge County, and of course, the city, had each committed to investing up to $15,000 in a local housing study for our region. After speaking with the funding district commission and determining what they're doing with a similar study, we've concluded it's best to partner with them. They are beginning their studies soon. They won't finish for two years, but they have indicated to us that they would study our area first, and we'd get results within a year or very close to that. Most of the items that we had hoped for in our study or indicated we needed, they will include in their study. There may be a few areas, in fact, will be a few areas where their study was not going to provide that data or information, and thus, we will pay a little extra, but it's still cost-effective. We're still going to get the results we hoped for in a timeframe that's acceptable to where we stand. It made sense just to partner. We'll save some real dollars in the long run as well. The mayor noted some of the activities in the General Assembly. I would say that one of the issues that, you know, they're all very important, he might comment in all four opportunities or activities that he did. One that's really interesting to me, and I think we should all focus on, is the elimination of the grocery tax. It has, it's a very viable thing to consider. However, if there's not replacement revenue from the state, by the calculations from Virginia's First Cities, and as the mayor noted, and you all know Jim Regenbold does a really good job on the numbers, it would cost Lexington $1.4 million if those revenues are not replaced. So it's a real issue. There are a number of bills in Richmond, some that claim to replace or plan to replace the revenues or partially replace them. I don't know that any of them say they would fully replace them. The governor is, has a proposal out there, but there's a lot of wrangling in the General Assembly about what may or may not get passed. So that's important, we can't stand to lose $1.4 million easily. And hopefully, our local representatives will consider that as we move forward. And let's see, I think I'm going to stop right there. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Members of council, have any questions for the city manager on that report? Hearing none. Thank you, Jim, and thank you to all the staff for negotiating and suffering through illnesses and surgeries and the team working together. So thank you. Please carry our thanks back to all of the team. City Attorney, Jared.
Just a very brief report tonight. Since we last met, I've been working with Rebecca Walters to support the school's decision to continue requiring masks of all students. I think that's got a firm legal basis, notwithstanding the governor's executive order that went into, went into effect, I guess it's been a week ago on Monday. But as of now, things have gone very smoothly, much more smoothly than I expected. So as of now, all the kids in Lexington public schools are expected to wear a mask when they're at school. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I would say, students and guests into the school.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for the city attorney on his report? Jared, thank you. Next item is new business. We have consideration of renewal of the lease for the Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Center. Jim, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. We have been in arrangement with the Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Center with a number of our local partners, including Rockbridge County, Augusta County, Rockingham County, cities of Harrisonburg, Stanton, and Waynesboro, to partner and provide a facility for the care of our juveniles who unfortunately may end up crossways with the law or have other reasons why they have to be housed in a facility of that nature and taken care of in those facilities. This lease is basically a renewal of the old lease that's been in place. Our city attorney did review it, it's fine. It also obviously represents the center, but I should tell you that the center is governed by representatives from all of our localities, so we certainly did not bring anything forth that would harm our localities. It fairly treats the center so that it can continue to operate efficiently and effectively for years to come, and it protects all of our localities. So this is a resolution before you to approve the new lease and authorize the city manager to sign it. Happy to answer any questions. It's, again, very similar to the arrangement we've been in. It does however provide for a longer period in automatic renewals. I would say that it's the very best opportunity we have to provide care for our young people who needed that type of facility, and our contribution financially to that facility is very, very small because luckily, we're not seeing too many of our juveniles needing to go into that facility. So, any questions?
What is our contribution?
I believe it's around 4%.
And what dollar amount does that work out to be, about?
I'll have to yield on that. I did not write that down, my apologies. I believe it's less than $10,000 a year. You know, entities like Rockingham and Augusta County pay hundreds of thousands a year. Yes, we're very, very fortunate. I mean, we get billed on based on bed use per month, and it's 10, 10, 7, nothing, you know?
But much like most of our detention, we wish that there was vacancy. Zero, exactly. Wish everybody would just behave themselves. Have a recommendation from the city manager, and I'd ask for council's consideration.
I move to approve Resolution 2022-01, Resolution Regarding Lease of Space from the Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Center Commission, and authorize the signing of the lease by the city manager.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. A second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, ask for a roll called vote. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sigler?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next item is consideration of the allocation of ARPA funds.
We all know that some months ago, we were fortunate enough to receive funding from the federal government under the American Recovery Plan Act, and part of those funds were available due to loss of revenues. They amounted to just about, got it here in front of me, I think it's, not seeing it, $2,300,000 somewhat. Why is it not in front of me? Recommendation, $2,387,911. You also heard when Jeff Martone gave his briefing on our infrastructure needs some, several months, excuse me, several meetings ago, that we have a number of projects out there, some of them, significant amount of them are bridges. One of them that's not scheduled on our CIP is the West Nelson Street Bridge over the creek there, Woods Creek, and that's a very expensive project for consideration for renovation, repair. It's our largest bridge, and looking at the situation now, it has a sufficiency score, that is, how sufficient is it to carry traffic and key to function? That keeps going down annually. It needs to be dealt with. It is a completely safe structure, there are no weight limits on it, there are no restrictions, no indication that there's any failure at all. These are surface cracks, these are areas where if we don't take action, the beams and the iron structures below it that support the bridge and below the concrete can rust in that because of more serious problem. The estimate for that project now, renovation, is just over $2 million. We do have available, potentially available, funding from the state based on general revenue sources that we are hoping to hear from in May, but there's no indication that we would actually receive that funding. We can apply for that funding annually, but when we apply, there's usually at least a four to five-year waiting time before we would receive the funding. So if we don't act now, and we let May pass by and don't get any funding, we're talking about fiscal year '27 or '28 before we'd have money to begin this project from the state. I really believe very strongly that given the circumstances, we have these dollars available. It was never my intention last fall or last summer to bring something like this before you, but given we have the funding available, I would really strongly recommend that we set that money aside in the CIP, the entire $2.387 million, and allocate $2 million of that for that bridge repair in the event we don't receive that money in May. So it's set aside, that's where it is. No debating other uses. We're not going to find $2 million two years from now if we use this money for something else. This is not going to happen. We've got it now, let's set it aside, let's use it for that purpose, and remove this question from our minds of how we're going to deal with it two years, five years, or six years from now because we don't want to wait and find out the bridge continues to deteriorate. You know, the condition of it is, again, it's not falling down, but it has surface cracks, and we know what happens after those surface cracks appear, it just gets worse. So that is my recommendation to you. Happy to answer any questions. We're doing a lot on infrastructure, this is one of those areas that I believe we should address today.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, point out that the $2 million buys you about 20 years' worth of service on this bridge is the expectation. So mark your calendars for 2042. Some of you are young enough to still be on council, so if you play your cards right. I have a recommendation from the city manager and ask for council's consideration.
I want to consider what would happen to the area should something occur negatively to that bridge. What would it, what would it mean? Is there absolutely no workaround available to us? My thought is, there isn't.
There are two workarounds that are, neither are desirable. One is using the Lime Kiln Bridge, which is structurally not as substantial as this bridge, and the other would be through the campus of Washington Lee. They don't have to let us go by. They don't have to let us go by, um, the law school and, and on out back up to Route 60, but those would be the two paths, uh, that would be, uh, preferable. Uh, otherwise, you could, um, uh, fill in, uh, somewhat the creek or replace it, but, um...
And those are the only paths available, uh, even now in an emergency.
Correct.
I, I would note the Lime Kiln Bridge does have weight restrictions on it.
Correct.
We can't send the ladder truck over it today. So, any kind of large traffic, should be desired to try and put it on the street, could not go over that bridge. So, yeah, it, it needs to be dealt with before we, potentially in the very near future, five to 10 years, may have an issue. We don't wanna wait and find out.
Well, I just, I move that we set aside that money for the bridge.
Second it...
Discussion.
I was just gonna ma, mention that it was Jeff Martone, sorry, Jeff Martone told us during the work session that, you know, if we do this in a controlled manner, on our own terms, as far as repairing the bridge, we can keep it in use while we do it and bring it, just use one lane at a time, which is a huge benefit over waiting till doing it on emergency basis and then trying to find an alternate route.
Right, right, right. Thank you for pointing that out, and, um, so we have a motion and a second for, uh, support of the recommendation from the City Manager for setting aside these funds for, uh, bridge repair. Any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, would ask for a roll called Vote. Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sigler?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Strawn?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion.
I just wanna mention that when the bridge collapsed in Pittsburgh last week, it made me think about how fortunate we are to be here in Lexington where we are paying attention to things like that and being proactive about them.
Absolutely. And, um, would point out the, uh, piece in the City Manager's report that the, the bridge is structurally sound, it's just the cosmetic pieces of it that, uh, are showing some wear and tear. So, um, keeping it safe is, and keeping our community safe is our primary objective. Uh, motion carries, thank you, Jim. Um, I don't think the closed session should last too long. We don't have one. Just checking to see who's paying attention. Is there any other business to come before Council this evening? Hearing none, uh, we will stand adjourned and look forward to our meeting on February 17th.